All right, the time is 7:00 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States, through the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in itsness.
Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Polaski.
Here.
Trustee Delapena.
Here.
Trustee Damke.
Here.
Trustee Forsyth.
Here.
Trustee Lanisa.
Here.
Trustee Pierkowski.
Here.
Trustee Trejo.
Here.
And we have a quorum. We'll move on to presentation of the prepared agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Disposed nay. Any abstentions seen on that motion carries. We'll move on to Village Board Public Comment, in which provide a comment on a topic or an agenda item may address the Village Board during the public comments and public hearing segments of the Village Board Agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone submit a witness slip in advance?
We do. We have Patricia Huntington.
Just approach the podium and just please adjust the microphone so everyone can hear you at home. Uh, no. Is it, Brian, could we check if the mic's on for her real quick? Sorry. Or Jason? All right, you should be good.
Can you hear me?
Very good. Thank you.
All right, well, I wrote the list of things that I'm here to discuss. Two of them are public safety issues. One is the skate park that I spoke to you about regarding kids on motorcycle bikes, motorized bikes, e-bikes, whatever you're calling them. I was there yesterday with my dog. We were in the car, and there was about fifteen kids in the parking lot riding those bikes, and they were using my car as like the starting pad for where they were racing to do wheelies, pop wheelies, or whatever all they were doing. I couldn't leave the parking lot. I didn't want to get out of the car because my dog does not like a lot of activity. He's a shepherd dog, and he likes to herd, and herders nip, so I did not want him out of the car, but he was barking in the car. The kids knew we were there, and they would not leave for the longest time. I sent a text message thinking it would go to the police. It's harder, it's easier for me to do that because of my hearing issues, so I didn't realize I went to the village. But anyway, I wanted you to address that because that is a public danger. I also see them on Rodenberg Road, on the east side of the road, in the big strip, riding on those at a high rate of speed, where pedestrians usually walk. So I know they're not supposed to be having any type of bicycles at all on the sidewalk, so I don't know where these kids can ride those. So that's one concern. The other concern is the pedestrian crossing at Travis in Rodenberg Road. I know you put the lights up there, which is great, but drivers are ignoring them. And when people are in the pedestrian crosswalk, they are rushing through and bypassing those kids and me. It happened to me twice the other day, going across the street and coming back by large vehicles, trucks. One was an SUV, one was a pickup truck. So they're ignoring the flashing lights, which is not long enough anyway for most people to get across the street safely, but now you've got traffic not stopping. So that is a big concern, because I witnessed it all the time. I saw one poor lady standing there with a stroller trying to get across the street, and she kept pressing the light. Nobody was stopping for, and I said to her, I said, "You're gonna have to take your chance to get out there so that they're gonna stop. So you either have to wait for a really wide space or just not cross at all." I don't know if she lived on what side of the street. So it's a danger. The other thing, I sent an email to the mayor regarding, I live in Penbrook Estates, which is a HOA. I really wish I had never moved into an HOA because it is horrible to get anything done. My grass is cut up from the lawn mowers, but now there's three dead trees that they are not taking down. They're huge trees. The trees have been there before I moved in. I've been there twenty-seven years. So there's a huge pine tree, two crab trees that are dead. The arborist from Best Lawns was out on the property. He says, "Oh, yeah, I've seen the trees. You have to get on the list." And I said, "Okay." So I sent a work order to the property management company, and they have totally ignored it. I've called them, and they're like, "Oh, no, you have to write us a letter." I said, "No, I already sent you a work order via the internet. That is in writing. So you need to do that because they are, they have a fiduciary responsibility to me, and they don't do anything unless I come to the village and, and issue a complaint and saying, 'Hey, they're not living up to their fiduciary responsibility. They're not taking that care of the property.'" So in the event that we have a sudden storm, high winds, which flipped a plane over at the Schaumburg Airport, knocked down one of the walls of the new buildings two years ago, those trees can wind up in my living room, or in my den, or even upstairs. I don't know if they would go that far, but they're, they're missiles. You know, they're big trees. Plus, they could land on cars, or people walking, or they could fall into the street and pose a hazard. So that needs to be addressed. Why they don't do things without being pushed, I don't know, but I have worked with both my state representative and my state senator to try and get HOA laws updated. They've never been touched since they were in, you know, and since they came out with them thirty years ago, or however long it was that they came out with those laws. So there needs to be power put back in the homeowner's hands, so that when we have a problem, we know who we can complain to that they're not doing the activity. Because I have a lot of time on my hands. I'm a senior citizen. I'm home, so I can write letters. I can take pictures, and I can certainly go around with petitions and talk to people. And I'm more than willing to get things done because high time that people I pay to give me services do the services when I need them. And I definitely have a need for them to remove those trees. And the next thing is people putting their trash cans out at two o'clock in the afternoon, or earlier before they're supposed to. And I noticed that a lot of my neighbors, instead of buying the large garbage can sacks, or whatever you want to call them, they use their bags from the Jewel or wherever grocery store they went to, so the small ones, and they don't tie them off, and they put them into the trash receptacle, stuff it, overstuff it. So frequently, it's usually windy on trash day, Monday into Tuesday, and that stuff blows, the lid blows down, and the trash is all blowing over onto my area. So I'm winding up with all kinds of stuff. So something in a newsletter, I don't know that everybody reads them, but maybe some violations to go out to some of these people that say, "Hey, you're responsible to take care of your trash, so it's not blowing all over," because it looks pretty disgusting on trash day. And then if the garbage men come along, they're not stopping to tie those bags either. They're just lifting them in there, so then stuff's flying all over. And it always winds up by me, because it blows right down by my house. So those are the things I wanted to address, and hopefully we can get something going to get some resolution to some of these concerns, especially that light, that light situation. I don't know if it can be a red light instead of an amber light, because I know when I took driving, they always said, "Yellow means proceed with caution." Most people now read that as, "Yellow light, I need to hit the gas," and that's what they're doing. So I liked it when you had the speedometer out there, or whatever you call that, clocking people. How about a camera that takes pictures of the license plates with the intersection where there's people in that intersection that are having to jump back or get out of the way because of traffic approaching? We got cameras everywhere. There's cameras in here. Why not on that intersection, so that we don't have some tragedies happen? Because most kids are not stopping to look. They're rushing out, and they want to cross that street. You know, so if it's nearly happening to me, and I walk fine, but you know, I'm walking with the dog, so somebody else who does not walk as well is going to have a problem. We're gonna have ambulances down there, you know, and then trying to find out who hit them, because you know nobody sticks around. If they do a hit and run, they take off. You know, so a camera would be good, maybe even signs saying, you know, cameras in, in action, or wherever they have, you know, cameras posted or whatever, so people understand that you can't jeopardize pedestrians. I mean, I don't understand. A lot of things are going on in the world today as far as we seem to throw a lot of civility out the window, and we don't seem to want to do things for one another anymore, and it's just aggravating that you're endangering people when you're trying to help people.
Yep. Thank you, ma'am. So I know from a, we, I did receive your email regarding the HOA, so I provided it to staff to follow up and just make sure that they're aware that we're, we're aware of the situation on that. As far as the crosswalk, I know our police are gonna start a two-week special patrol in that area to kind of enforce it. Now, the traffic lights and signals are very heavily regulated, so we cannot deviate from what the state standards are, so switching the color of the light or whatnot is not something that's possible. And there are some public's privacy concerns we have to be mindful of about posting cameras. We can't just post them anywhere we want to, so I, well, I appreciate the sentiment. There's some, yeah, there, there's some, there, there's other considerations we have to take into account as far as that goes. And then I think just one thing I would, we're obviously gonna be talking about e-bikes a lot tonight, so we'll stay tuned hopefully, or watch the video at home as far as where that debate kind of settles. But I know one thing, just since you brought it up as far as texting, so the county did recently roll out text to nine-one-one as a service, so that's something that's available across DuPage County now. It's been live in Cook County for some time, but we've finally joined that. It's for anyone who has a Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, or Dish wireless network, so it's not necessarily widespread, but if you have a carrier that's on their bandwidth, then it also works. So I think that's just a good, kind of just general public service announcement for everyone to be aware of. So, but we appreciate you coming out tonight, and we have your contact information, so we'll follow up on anything if we can. So, thank you. Is there any other members of the public here today that wish to address the board? Yep, if you don't mind, you gotta come up to the podium, unfortunately, state your name for the record, and... But it should be on, so. Oh, okay.
For a sec.
Yeah.
This is really, really short, because I know you're gonna be talking about e-bikes, and I've seen the fire from the police department in the Park District, and I think the thing to be included really in a large font and for simple people to read is where can they drive crime? So there's a lot of, you can't go here, you can't go there, but let us know where you can go. Let them know.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you so much. Is there any other members of the public who wish to address the board at this time? The record show none. We'll continue on with officials and staff reports. Under my report, you know, the village was just named for the third time a top pick for best community to live in, and so we're very excited by that, and we have over twenty-three local businesses recognized in twenty-seven different categories. So we're very proud to continue to see that number rise and grow, and so we encourage everyone in the most Chicago possibly, vote every day if you can, as you can, on the Daily Herald, so we can potentially have back-to-back best of the best awards for best community to live in. So next, I do have a motion I'd like to entertain from the board, even though it is listed in the agenda as such. I'd ask that there be a motion to approve during the Village Board meetings at 6:30 PM for the following dates of July fourteenth, July twenty-eighth, August eleventh, and August twenty-fifth, 2025. So, is there a motion?
Moved.
For a second?
Again.
Any discussion on this? Yes, Cheryl?
Minutes say include June twenty-third as well.
Correct. The way that we notice the meetings, though, we cannot do the June one at this point, because we've already published those, so. Any other questions or comments? This will be noticed appropriately for the public to follow, but that way we can use some of that extra daylight to our advantage in the summer months at least, so. Could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Delapena.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Excuse me. Trustee Forsyth.
Aye.
Trustee Lanisa.
Aye.
Trustee Pierkowski.
Aye.
And that, that's the sorry, I lost track of the count there. You're good.
Trustee.
I was about to say, wait a minute.
Trustee Damke.
There you go.
Um, should I say aye yet?
Yes. Um, that's it for my report. Is there any village trustees that have a report tonight? Seeing none, do we have a village clerk report?
No.
Village attorney?
No report.
Village administrator. We'll continue on to unfinished business. First, we have the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, or non-controversial in nature, and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion on these items unless removed from the consent agenda. Are there any items removed from the consent agenda? The record show none. Tonight, we just have presentation approval of the Village Board minutes of May twenty-seventh, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
For a second? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Damke.
Aye.
Excuse me. Trustee Delapena.
Aye.
Trustee Forsyth.
Aye.
Trustee Lanisa. Pierkowski.
Aye.
That motion carries. We'll continue on with our other unfinished items. We have nothing under development and engineering services tonight, administration, fire, or police, but public works. Trustee Delapena.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village of Roselle and Garland slash DBS, Inc., joint purchasing cooperative, MICPA, M.I.C.P.A., and OMNIYA for the Police Department building waterproofing in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Again. All right, any discussion on this item? Yes, trustee.
I just wanted to make a mention that I talked to Karen about this, because in my days on the board, I never remember voting on this specifically as a line item, but that was because it was always incorporated as the whole package whenever we had the bricks reworked. So she explained it to me. I wanted to just let everybody know that this would have normally been in the process, but we kind of unbundled it temporarily, right? So it is something that we've been doing. It's not something brand new that's never happened before, so I just wanted to let the board know that we discussed this.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Delapena.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Damke.
Aye.
Trustee Forsyth.
Aye.
Trustee Lanisa.
Aye.
Trustee Pierkowski.
Aye.
That motion carries. We'll continue on to finance. Trustee Lanisa?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable lists for June ninth, 2025, in the amount of one million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Delapena.
Aye.
Trustee Damke.
Aye.
Trustee Forsyth.
Aye.
Trustee Pierkowski.
Aye.
That motion carries. We'll continue on to new business, and we'll be discussing our draft ordinance for regulating e-bikes and other devices with motors, so I'll invite up the Chief of Police, Rob Beretto, to present.
Man of the evening.
Don't spook him off. We need him tonight.
Yeah. Gotta quit meeting like this. Mayor, Village Board, thanks for the opportunity to come back before you with, under new business, to talk about the draft ordinance that we put together for e-bikes. We took all of the comments.
Is the microphone on for you? I know, I know you're, oh, okay, perfect. I just, I know you've got a booming voice, so, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go step by step through each one of these pieces, and instead of the whole presentation, if there are questions, please feel free to interrupt and ask me some questions on this. We wait till the very end. Each one of this, each one of these is individual, so we'll talk about it. We added, and you see the section, all of them have sections here, so you can follow along in the ordinance that we sent you, but we added definitions for class one, two, and three e-bikes into the Village Code. If you remember when I spoke last time, a class one e-bike is power assist on pedals, and a motor stops helping the rider when they get to twenty miles an hour. Class two is motor assist pedals, but also significantly, you have that throttle. Remember, I talked about that throttle? So that's what class two has. That'll take you all the way up to twenty miles an hour as well. And then a class three is motor assist, and that's via pedaling, and that'll take you up to twenty-eight miles an hour, so that's the fastest of the three. Also significantly, an e-bike has to have operable pedals, and then it has to have a motor that is less than seven hundred and fifty watts. So we added some new definitions to our personal use vehicle categories, and we approached this from taking the input, some of the personal use vehicles, and we added it later, but some of the personal use vehicles, they're still defined, but they're no longer illegal, which is like skateboards and rollerblades and things like that, but that's not where we put this. So the two new definitions that we added to personal use vehicles is a low-speed electric scooter, and a low-speed electric scooter will be, have two to three wheels that'll weigh less than a hundred pounds, and it has a max speed of ten miles an hour. So we added that. And then also, we added what I've been talking about quite a bit, these off-highway motorcycles. This is those pegs, not pedals. So we added them, and as I presented last time, these are these off-highway motorcycles. They're electric, and they can get all the way up, you know, but they got like twenty-three thousand watts, some of them, and they get all the way up to sixty-eight miles an hour. So we added these as a category of personal use vehicles. And then just to remind everybody, personal use vehicles are listed at the bottom there, and I mentioned, you know, skateboard motorized, skateboards, roller skates, rollerblades, regular scooter, a motorized scooter. We have golf carts, recreational off-highway vehicles, so that is like a John Deere Gator or like a go-kart type thing. That's what we would consider that. All-terrain vehicle, ATV, and the off-highway motorcycle, which we added, and the low-speed electric. So grabbing some of the other ordinances and from us talking to the board, we added a parental responsibility clause. So if there is a child that is violating one of these parts of this ordinance, the parent may also receive a ticket. So that is in there. We took the next section there. Anything that applies to bicycles, we took and we applied it to e-bikes. There's a little caveat in the ordinance which just says, "Well, but if there's additional restrictions on e-bikes, those are also additional." But in general, if you're riding an e-bike, you gotta follow the same rules as you'd have to follow for a bicycle, and then we added some additional things for e-bikes. So off-highway motorcycles and e-bikes with motors that are over seven hundred and fifty watts aren't allowed anywhere except private property with the permission of the owner. So when I say during the rest of this presentation, "Not allowed anywhere," just think like private property with the permission of the owner, other than that. So we added some additional regulations for low-speed electric bikes. So we grabbed that piece from Huntley that I had talked about. So you have to be sixteen years of age or older to operate a class one, two, or three e-bike. But if you are under sixteen years of age, you can operate a class one or two if you're not using the motor. So you can operate it like a regular bicycle, as long as you're using pedal power only. You can operate it like a regular bicycle. So that is a, you bought it for your grandkid, you brought it, bought it for your son or daughter, and you don't want to take it away. It's like, well, no, you can ride it if you're under sixteen, but significantly, you can't use that throttle. So you can't use the throttle, the pop a wheelie from Roselle Road all the way to Irving Park Road, because that's clearly against the rule. We also added in here that e-bikes are not permitted on the sidewalks. They're not, which is state law. Let me just grab the state, as I mentioned before. They're not permitted on bike paths or other public, where motor vehicles aren't, are prohibited. However, you can ride e-bikes on bike paths, multi-use paths, if you're not using the motor. So they're not completely banned. You just can't use them. We took the state law, and we added a little more, a little later, you'll see this, but state law makes it, you have to be eighteen years of age or older to operate a low-speed electric scooter, that's state law. So we, we put it in. And then something I wanted to draw the board's attention to is, so we had that helmet requirement for e-bike riders under eighteen, but I was also looking at this. I think that what we're doing for the class one and class two, so what we have is, hey, if you're, if you're sixteen years, if you're under sixteen years of age, and you're on a class one or a class two e-bike, you're not allowed to operate it using the motor anyway. You have to ride it like a regular bicycle. So to put a helmet law in there when you're, like, if my friend is riding a regular bicycle, and I'm riding the e-bicycle, but I'm following the rules and I'm pedal power, you know, he doesn't have to wear a helmet, but I do. So I thought maybe, hey, I absolutely get it, a class three, which goes twenty-eight miles an hour, between sixteen and eighteen years of age, I absolutely see the need for that, because you're allowed to operate it, and we had grabbed that ordinance. Bloomingdale kind of had a piece of that, but they didn't restrict them like we did for under sixteen. So I would, for me, my suggestion would be, we could keep it between sixteen and eighteen, but maybe as long as they're following the rules, under sixteen, they don't have to wear a helmet, because we don't have regular bicycles required to wear helmets. That's all, that's how I got it. Types of personal use vehicles that are prohibited from public property. So everyone that's operating a personal use vehicle, they're, they have to operate it if they're allowed to operate it, meaning skateboards and regular rollerblades and stuff. They just have to follow the rules. The second section here on the left, you see personal use vehicles are prohibited from public streets and sidewalks. So that's all that stuff on the left, motorized skateboard, motorized scooter, golf cart, recreational off-highway vehicle, all-terrain vehicle, and off-highway motorcycle. The stuff on the right was from, with board input, that's now just, hey, just follow the rules. They're, they're legal. We've had that in the ordinance, you know, for a very long time, and so it's good that we separated it now. Rental responsibility, this is something we put from Itasca. Itasca has like an impoundment feature. So this is, hey, we have the authority to either impound it or immediately release the personal vehicle to a parent or guardian. So as I had mentioned before, one of the benefits to this is, hey, you're violating the rules. We stop you. We write you the ticket, and then we can take your bicycle, and we can bring it to the station, and your parent would have to come and pick it up. Now, we would set up some rules. We, we wouldn't just automatically, you know, start grabbing them. It would first, we'd have to take some pictures of it. We're gonna call the parent. We're gonna let the parent know. We're gonna bring it back. We would have, you know, similar to what we would do for an adjudication, I'm sorry, like an ad minuto. We don't, right now, have a fee for it. It's just pulling this off the street so that the parent has to come and, or a guardian has to come pick up the bike. And then, so we added additional regulations for low-speed electric. So we just grabbed the state law. I grabbed the high points. When you look at the ordinance, there's a bunch of stuff in there, but I grabbed the high points. So it can't be on a, and this is state law. It can't be on a street if the speed limit is higher than thirty-five miles an hour. You have to be eighteen years of age or older to operate it. Only one person is allowed on the scooter, and then you can't have a low-speed e-scooter on a state highway. Like I said, there's some other stuff in there, like headlights, headlights, like that, but I figured that would be, be too much to throw in here. So we threw a slide in. There was a question as to where are bike and multi-use paths? So if you look up here, you'll see the, what is that, the purple park district, shows you where the Park District is, parks or park district, park district facilities are in yellow. Existing village bike paths are on here, paths, and then proposed village bike paths are on here as well. If you look, the Park District just recently passed some regulations. I won't do deep dive into that, but that's in the lower right. So Park District took the class three restrictions that are on e-bikes for state law, and they actually made it to class one. So you have to be sixteen years of age or older, and you can only ride a class one on Park District paths. And then they, they completely banned low-speed scooters with a bunch of other stuff. The final slide here is the final wrapping up, like, where can I ride? So as we put this ordinance together, vice of the vehicle, you know, is a bicycle, you can ride it everywhere. If it's an e-bike, yeah, you can ride it on public streets, but there's age restrictions, and they may be, they may apply to the motor assistance that you can use, and then it just shows in there, class three, age sixteen and older, you know, you can ride. And then bike paths, yes, you can ride them on bike paths, meaning e-bikes, but you can only use pedal power. And you can't ride them on sidewalks. That's state law, so we're just grabbing the state law. And then personal use vehicles, which I won't go through, I've already mentioned it several times, but you can't ride them anywhere. And then the low-speed. And then the low speed electric scooter, we had just went through there and had explained where low speed electric scooters are allowed. And like, so we just grabbed state law. So we grabbed a lot, a lot of the board input. We tried to put everything in there, take your direction. My only, like I said, my only week would probably be the helmet, just because it makes sense. But I'd love to take questions.
Any initial questions to the board? We'll go line by line on each of these to make sure that we have consensus. But are there any questions or that you need clarified before we do that? Trustee Downkey.
So yeah, okay. Why would anybody buy a motorized bike if they can't use it? How are you gonna enforce that with a kid who's gonna be pedaling and, you know, he didn't get an e-bike to pedal it? That's one problem that's gonna be kind of ironic. Our bike paths are also on streets in Roseville too, right? So is that considered driving on the street or is that on a bike path?
It depends on where it is. If it's there on the side, like I think we had one that's gonna be proposed on Central. If it's designated as a bike path and it's, let's say Bryn Mawr, that would be considered a bike path and you would not be able to operate it unless you're using pedal power.
But then you could go on the street if you're over 16. Okay. And then the last question is, does this apply to HOAs?
It would be anywhere in the village of Roseville.
Police are streets. I mean, it's not like they have their own private security to do speed enforcement, right?
I mean, my daughter lives in an HOA in Elgin, and then they have special rules in Elgin. But to your point, you can't go on a 35 mile an hour street with things that they're allowing, so.
They could also, I would argue, if they wanted to, I don't know how they would enforce it, they could probably put on other restrictions on their property as a private property owner, so.
Those are the three I have.
Yeah, now, just to go with the first one. Parents have already bought these. So what we're having the issue, we're having issues with e-bikes, as we've heard a lot. Pegs, not pedals. We're having a lot of those issues. Those are very fast. But then also the class two is a real big two. It's the problem of 20 miles an hour.
Oh, yeah.
That will be, as far as the enforcement, it's gonna be very easy to, because that was the question, well, how do you know? Well, very easy if somebody is zipping along and they're not, they're not pedaling. Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be very easy to know.
Pedal 45 miles an hour.
Two and it's throttle. So that part is gonna be very easy.
And the other irony is you're gonna allow them to be on private property with these 750, what is it, cubic?
750 watts or greater, I couldn't.
How long does it take to get off the property with a speed like that? You know, I mean, you're gonna have to have an acre or two of yard to play with that thing. But anyway, that's kind of goofy that someone would have that kind of a power bike, but they can only use it in their backyard.
Yeah, I mean, but every, I would just say this, as you've seen from the last presentation that I made, we grabbed this from a bunch of different ordinances and most of the communities that are around. So everybody is moving towards this. There, it would be great, and we've said this before, it'd be great if the state got together, because there has been some push like, hey, listen, this group of communities should get together in this group, but it doesn't take very long for us to say, well, this group of communities should get together. Well, then the group of communities that abut them, well, they want a little different rule. Well, the whole thing is you get a patchwork and that's why we have said, it would be great for the state to do something about it. But barring that, we're taking, you know, we're taking action on this. And we're looking at getting some e-bikes, as mentioned from before. So.
And you have to pedal them.
We don't, well, we're over 16. Last I checked, all of us, so we'll actually be able to, we'll actually be able to enforce the law on the e-bikes. It's, we're working on getting votes right now.
And I think to your point too, each community is gonna be a little bit different in terms of what they have for bike paths and infrastructure, whether that are on street, off street and whatnot. So every community is gonna have a slightly different impact on that. And we also have the benefit of having four park districts that we work with within our jurisdictional boundaries or other communities, I don't think are as fortunate as us to have as many bodies from that side. But other questions from the board before we go line by line?
At the moment, no.
Always an opportunity to get those questions answered, so, but, all right. So going and just taking the, the regulations one at a time. As far as the additional, are the additions for personal use vehicles to it, including the low speed electric scooters and the off highway motorcycles? I assume there is, is there consensus on that additional new language there?
Yes, yeah.
All right, I've got head nods on the other side, so all six are on board with that one. Going to amending the bicycle cord, code to the parental responsibility, which allows police to ticket both the child and the parent in a, in a situation. Is there consensus on that language?
Yes. Could I ask one question? What is an average ticket for that? What does it cost?
It starts at 35, but it can go all the way up.
Okay, is it, if there are multiple offenders, does it go up?
Yeah, like them would be racked.
Yes.
And giving these citations, they would be required to come to adjudication, or would this come through?
Yep.
Okay.
So it's within our four walls, so they, they come here, adjudication ticket.
So a little bit more inconvenient for mom and dad to maybe take time off of work to come to village hall to go through that situation as well.
And they're under 16, so we wouldn't allow them to come in by themselves anyway.
Absolutely.
We absolutely want face to face with the parents and the kids.
So the second one, applying the bicycle rules and restrictions to e-bikes, I assume that is also a consensus one?
Yes.
Six nods and yeses. As far as then moving on to the off highway motorcycles and e-bikes with 750 plus watts, those are be banned essentially from all public property, all public property with the exception of your private yard with permission of the owner. Is that consensus for the board on that item? Got consensus from all six. Continuing on the additional regulations. So first point, that you must be 16 or older to operate a class one or two or three e-bike, complying with the rules and the requirements for class three e-bikes being that you have to be 16 to ride. So consensus regarding that piece of it.
I want to say something about that, can I?
Yeah.
When they're 16, I was 16 once and I got a bike when I was 15 years old. And I mean, when I immediately got my driver's license and the bike went into rack, okay? So I think when you're talking 16 is the magic moment. A lot of these kids are gonna get their driver's license with a car, and they're not gonna probably even want the bike anymore. I mean, they might give it to their little brother, but I think that's a good age for, for that kind of dividing line.
Other thoughts or comments on that one? Consensus as far as that cutoff, as far as you to actually engage and use the motor assist? And I'm gonna emphasize that, because then it comes into play later on, but for class one, two, and three. Everyone's, on that one, okay. The next piece being, all e-bike classes are not permitted on the sidewalk, which is already state law. But we would also ban them from bike paths with motor assist rather and other public property where a motor vehicle is prohibited. So again, those bike paths, whether they are separated or on the street, you could use your pedal, just like a normal bicycle would, but you could not use your motor assist on those bike paths. Which I think tees up nicely with the park district a little bit there on that end to get some continuity between the two. But is there consensus on that piece?
Yes. Yeah, I want to add one thing to that too. I wasn't necessarily in agreement with this before, but I've got a, a place where I pull my car out that's got bushes and I wouldn't be able to see anybody coming down the sidewalk. And I would put my car in the sidewalk, and if there's a bike coming at 20 miles an hour, he's gonna be in deep trouble when he hits my car. So I can see how the sidewalk is just as dangerous as the street, so.
All right, so all six are in favor of that. And then adding in for the low speed electric scooters, you have to be 18 or plus, or older rather, to operate. I assume everyone's in agreement on that one.
Just for clarification too, that you said it was state law, right?
Yeah.
So like, we have to.
Yeah, we just grabbed, yeah, we just.
We can make it higher, we can make it 20.
Right, right, right. But I'm just saying, like, I just wanted to make sure that that was the state law.
Yeah. So consensus on the, the e-low speed electric scooters?
Yes.
Okay, all six are saying yes. As far as the helmet requirement, so currently it is written up that we could require helmets for e-bike riders under the age of 18. The chief has said that there's other kind of considerations there. Does the board want to move forward with the helmet law, or given how we have structured it, you want to maybe reconsider that piece? Trustee Trejo.
Based on the feedback from you, I'm open to taking his suggestion.
Okay, trustee Lenisa. Okay, so we've got two in favor of kind of opting out, okay, four. Got a head nod from Mr. Pirkowski and removing the helmet requirement, since the way we've structured it, you cannot use the pedal, you cannot use motor assist if you're under the age of 16. So to make it equitable to our bicycle laws, which don't require a helmet, I think it's kind of the, the gist of the recommendation on that one, so.
It's confusing.
Require them when we don't for bicycles?
Between 16 and 18 years of age, you're on a class three, or you're on, you can ride any e-bike. You have to wear a helmet. Once you turn 18, you don't have to. But if you're under 16, you don't have to, because you're on it, you're on.
This is all state law.
Well, you're only, no, there's no helmet law for state, but you're only on a class one or two e-bike anyway, and you're not allowed to use power. So you're riding it like a bicycle anyway. So we don't require bicyclists to use a helmet.
And I wouldn't do, do it with them either.
So we got all six in favor of that. I'd just say let's educate people on the importance of helmets. I think I, I understand and I agree that it's not, it doesn't make sense having the ordinance, but that doesn't mean we can't educate people on it, right? So, and then we do clarify next, as far as the types of personal use vehicles that are prohibited from public property. And so we would provide differentiation, which would just, for the sake of keeping this easy for everyone, we would allow skateboards, roller skates or roller blades, scooters and low speed electric scooters on public property essentially, or sidewalks. Is that correct?
Yes, and because we're the only reason why we added low speed electric scooters, because we have certain rules later.
Yep. So any, is there consensus on this new differentiation? I know we had some conversation about that last time, not necessarily related to e-bikes, but we're cleaning up the section, so let's clean it up, so. All right, I got consensus from.
Yes.
Right, six are in agreement on that one. And then moving on to the personal use vehicles, the ability to impound vehicles and they can be released to a parent or guardian. Do we have consensus on that one?
One question on that, you said there's no fee for that.
Right now.
But if, if we impound it 10 times, I'm wondering if there should be something after, you know, for a repeat offender.
We absolutely can add a fee. I just hadn't, you know, like that's.
I'm just throwing it out there to see what the rest of the board would think about that.
Thoughts on the board on that piece of it?
This is like a living document, because we can tweak it as we go along, as we learn things, right? So to your point, even though you didn't put it in here, that could be something we would add on as the situation necessitates it.
I think the other way, I would just throw that, if we think we might want to, we could always, and I'm not here to write ordinances or laws on the spot, but we could always say up to a certain amount, so that way it's at the.
Don't you already have the tickets where you're gonna increase the amount of the fine from 35 up to 250? So if we get to that point, maybe.
Okay.
At least the officer has that discretion at that point in time if it's multiple encounters.
So I, I thought I saw a hand up over here, but.
What's the magic number, three?
It's, I think it's on the police.
We don't know.
Yeah. Trustee Trejo.
Just a question, just based on trustee De La Pena's question about the impound fee. What, can you walk me through, like, how much time would it take, do you think, for an officer to, like, go through the process of impounding and reaching out to a parent and kind of going through all that?
So the only.
How long would they be off the street essentially?
Yeah, maybe half an hour. It, well, it depends on when the parent's gonna come in, but we wouldn't. And it will also depend on if we say, hey, listen, Billy, we're taking your bike and he, he lives right across the street. We would let him go, you know, call his parent. No, I want him to be at the station and I'm gonna pick him up. That, it, that'll be fluid. But as far as the actual taking some pictures, putting it on the back, on our bike rack on the back of the squad, bringing it back to the station to film it out. Hey, you're looking at, you know, half an hour.
So we like impoundment, do we want a fee, do we not want a fee?
I'm okay with it as is.
Okay, as is, consensus. All right. And then we are adding select additional features of the state law regarding low speed electric scooters, just to, I think, highlight it, and I assume though, to give us the ability to do local infractions, bring it into our adjudication, correct?
Correct.
As a result, okay.
And we grabbed everything from low speed electric scooters. I just didn't put it on here because it would have been a bunch. Oh, yeah, well, you need a, a headlight. Headlight on the back if you're riding. It's all in the ordinance, but we just grabbed the state law.
Great. So consensus on adding this language to? Consensus, yep, on for electric e-scooters. It's a kind of. Yep, if it's private property, that's a different situation. It would have to be done. Could do that with the permission of the private property owner, but if it's a public parking lot, like a metro lot or whatnot, then that the village operates, then that would be something that would bring it into. That is a publicly owned lot, so that is on where it is. But with it becoming future private property, then that would be a different situation, so. So that covers all of the ordinances that I think it's almost like you had a cheat sheet or you were working in the back after that comment to get this one in there. But we kind of got the semblance of a what you can do with it. So I think let's continue to work with community relations to kind of polish it off. But I think, do you have the direction you need from the board in order to bring an ordinance forward for us to pass?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there any closing comments or thoughts? So I'm gonna go trustee Lenisa, Trejo, and then Domkey.
Who are we gonna communicate this to the community and, and teach the kids what the laws are?
Yeah, so we'll be working very closely with communications, oh, yeah, hold on. Communications director Emily Glimko put these together twice in a row for me. So I'm just saying a shout out to her, because it was huge that she did a great job, and I forgot to thank her last time. So, so we will work with her and we will work with community resource coordinator Maria Reyes, and we'll do a lot of messaging. To the point that was brought up earlier about, hey, where can you ride? We will do that. Hey, lots and lots of messaging. I'm really big on education, 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 training, 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 so that people, we have 10,000 followers on Facebook. We'll push it all out so that everybody, as many people as are paying attention are gonna see it, so.
We've got a newsletter push that, this is perfect timing where if we have board direction, we can include that in our print newsletter that goes to every household, so.
We're gonna push that a lot, very much.
National line out would be another good.
Yeah, I mean, we're in our middle of our event season, so we generally have a police table, so we'll be handing those flyers out. We'll be, we'll be working all of that. It's very important for us to push it out, because it's a change for the community. And it's also really good to get out so that parents go, oh, wait a minute, you, you can't go out. That may help out a lot.
Trustee Trejo.
I was just gonna say, just obviously, there's a lot of new things here and it's just a new issue in the community. So I would like to request that maybe we get like, maybe in like October or November timeframe to just get like an update on this and just talk about enforcement activity just as on a future board agenda.
Absolutely. Trustee Downkey.
I know what Carol said. I was gonna ask how we can get it out. And Carol out there said, you know, maybe on one side of the card, it's all the do's, and on the other side, all the don'ts. Make it as simple as possible. You don't have to tell everybody every rule of the world in there, just what's more applicable to us. And then they can get more details if they go to the website or the other mailings that we might put into the water bill or something to get the word out, because the last thing I want to hear is, I didn't know that. My kid's dead and I didn't know that. I mean, I don't mean to make a joke of that, but I mean, people don't know, they just don't pay attention. And it should be like a hard card stock, you know, that is waterproof that I can put on my refrigerator or something, because this is important stuff.
Yeah, Emily and Maria are experts. We will be having a planning session so that we know exactly how to approach it, so.
And even on the French market, there's a nonprofit table. I, I don't know if they'd allow the village to put some community service notices on that table.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you so much, chief. Appreciate all the work that went into this, so.
Great time.
Continuing on, we do have one more option for village board public comments. So does the public have any, are there any members of the public wish to address the board at this time? I could show none. Is there any other business for discussion only in front of the board tonight? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to convene executive session for the purpose of discussing real property. No final action will be taken. We'll be adjourning from executive session. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
I could have a roll call, please.
I'm trustee Trejo.
Aye.
De La Pena.
Aye.
Forsythe.
Aye.
And Domkey.
Aye.
Trustee Lenisa.
Aye.